America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank everybody for coming. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yea.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yea.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Here.
And we're all here this evening. I think I got a pen that works. All right, move on to public participation. The first one, public comment. This is where I give my spiel if anybody's here that wants to speak. All right, hearing none, we'll move on. The second item, which is proclamation for Engineers Week. I will read the proclamation and then entertain a motion for approval. Whereas engineers have used their scientific and technical knowledge and skills in creative and innovative ways to improve society's quality of life. And whereas engineers face the major technological challenges of our time, from rebuilding towns devastated by natural disasters to revolutionizing our infrastructure and technical progress. And whereas engineers are encouraging our youth math and science students to realize their practical power of their knowledge. And whereas we look more than ever to engineers and their knowledge and skills to meet the challenges of the 21st century. Now therefore, I, Matt Brawley, as village president, as president of the Village of Montgomery, on behalf of its citizens and village officials, do hereby proclaim the week of February 22nd through 28th, 2015, to be National Engineers Week in all of Montgomery, Illinois. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lee. Oh, sorry, trustee Hines.
Yea.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yea.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yea.
That carries. Thank you. Items for separate action. Item A, site agreement with Sprintcom, Inc., for cellular antenna installation and lease. And with that, I will ask Director Povens for a summary of this item.
Thank you, President Brawley. This is a lease agreement with Sprintcom to put a cell antenna on what we call the West Water Tank, which is behind the B V F building, which many of you will remember as the Dial property. It's fairly straightforward and relatively simple installation. Actually, there is a, has been a carrier on that site for some time, and this will really just replace the, that old carrier with a new carrier. The antenna structure and look will be pretty similar. And again, it's really just taking one down and putting up another. We have worked with Sprintcom, staff, actually, all departments and village attorney's office have worked. We renegotiated a higher lease amount, so we think it's a very reasonable deal for the village aesthetically, pretty much unchanged. That site is somewhat tucked away in an industrial area, so not too much of a concern there. This is a five-year lease with, I believe, five, five-year extensions that go with it. So it is a long-term agreement, but pretty typical for this type of agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody else on that tower?
No, I don't, no other cell carriers. I'm not sure if we have police, we have some police equipment at the West Tower, but no other cell carriers.
This is an odd question. When we do have a contractor installing equipment on our, on our water towers, do we have an official present with them while they're installing that or?
An official what? I'm sorry.
Well, do we have a Village of Montgomery employee with them?
Actually, we work with Engineering Enterprises and we'll have their staff out there. It's not continuously. We go out at just different stages of the installation. Again, they'll be, I think we're using some of the existing brackets to hang cable and to mount the antennas. Our biggest concern is with the paint. Some of you may remember, we repainted that tower not too long ago, and the type of paint system requires some care and in fixing any areas that get scratched or burned or anything like that. So to answer your question, yes, we will have a presence on the site.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Youngerman, second by trustee Bond. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yea.
That carries. Thank you. Items for separate action. Item A, site agreement with Sprintcom, Inc., for cellular antenna installation and lease. And with that, I will ask Director Povens for a summary of this item.
Thank you, President Brawley. This is a lease agreement with Sprintcom to put a cell antenna on what we call the West Water Tank, which is behind the B V F building, which many of you will remember as the Dial property. It's fairly straightforward and relatively simple installation. Actually, there is a, has been a carrier on that site for some time, and this will really just replace the, that old carrier with a new carrier. The antenna structure and look will be pretty similar. And again, it's really just taking one down and putting up another. We have worked with Sprintcom, staff, actually, all departments and village attorney's office have worked. We renegotiated a higher lease amount, so we think it's a very reasonable deal for the village aesthetically, pretty much unchanged. That site is somewhat tucked away in an industrial area, so not too much of a concern there. This is a five-year lease with, I believe, five, five-year extensions that go with it. So it is a long-term agreement, but pretty typical for this type of agreement. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody else on that tower?
No, I don't, no other cell carriers. I'm not sure if we have police, we have some police equipment at the West Tower, but no other cell carriers.
This is an odd question. When we do have a contractor installing equipment on our, on our water towers, do we have an official present with them while they're installing that or?
An official what? I'm sorry.
Well, do we have a Village of Montgomery employee with them?
Actually, we work with Engineering Enterprises and we'll have their staff out there. It's not continuously. We go out at just different stages of the installation. Again, they'll be, I think we're using some of the existing brackets to hang cable and to mount the antennas. Our biggest concern is with the paint. Some of you may remember, we repainted that tower not too long ago, and the type of paint system requires some care and in fixing any areas that get scratched or burned or anything like that. So to answer your question, yes, we will have a presence on the site.
Okay. Any other questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Youngerman, second by trustee Bond. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yea.
And that carries. Six, zero. Thank you. Moving on, item B, which is a scope of work for Boulder Hill Water Main Improvements, Contract C. And with any luck, Contract C will be the last part of this contract that we'll have funding for. With that, I'll ask Director Povens for summary.
Thank you, President Brawley. In your pack tonight is a memo from Engineering Enterprises outlining our recommendations for the roads, or the roads that have the water main that we want to repair on Contract C. At the February 17th committee of the whole, we discussed the amount that we're going to spend, that $982,000 that is available. So my staff and Jack Rosen, CLR Utilities Supervisor, and I met with Engineer Wallers and his staff, and actually before that, Jack and I met with Gary Byer, Street Supervisor, just to get input on, on what our recommendations might be. I don't have it tonight, but we do have a ranked list of water main breaks, and they're ranked by cost benefit and highest breaks per distance. So we kind of start with that list and go from there. As you can see in the memo, we also look at water main break history and water quality issues, and as with any of them, we're trying to eliminate things like dead ends and undersized water mains as well. So based on that, you'll see on the first, the second page of your pack, at the first page of Engineer Wallers' memo, at the bottom, our recommendation will be to replace 1,150 feet of water main on Knollwood Drive. That was the highest ranked on our list. So in this case, highest ranked is bad. It means there's quite a few water main breaks on that section. The second part of the recommendation is Pickford Drive. We actually, it's ranked number three, but the top four sections on our list are razor-thin as far as the difference in the ratings. So I think you could pick any of them based on the number of water main breaks and the breaks per mile that we have there. We went with Pickford because of its proximity to the last section we did. It's a combination of lined and unlined pipe, so we've been trying to eliminate the unlined pipe primarily. And there have been some water quality issues out there, nothing in quite a while, but we think that'll be another benefit of going down to Pickford. And then we've also listed Scarsdale Court. That's a much smaller section, but we'd like to bid that as an alternate in the event that our bids come in lower than we anticipate. The last two contracts, we've seen that happen, so we'll bid this alternate. It would only be, well, all these will only be approved after we bring them back to you for a word of contract. But if the bids for the total come in at or under that 982, we would recommend doing the alternate as well. Be happy to take any questions.
Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve? Second.
Moved in second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Marisack?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Hines?
Yea.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Moving on, our, our only item for discussion this evening is FY '16 capital improvement budget and C I P. And with that, I'll ask Director Van Vorn for his presentation.
Thank you, Village President Brawley. In front of the board tonight is the capital improvement program, or the C I P for the fiscal year '16. There is one page that lists the major projects going on, and then the supporting documents are, are listed behind there. With M F T, we are looking at a $250,000 street maintenance program out of M F T. We are also looking at approximately $250,000 of road salt and then some other, a couple of other projects there. Under capital improvement, we are looking at two storage buildings for Public Works, one for vehicles and one for seasonal equipment. The village hall, as well as Public Works and Police Station, we're looking at a new phone system that would actually allow us to link all three buildings. Financial software update, and then the Light Road Crossing, which is a grant that has been in front of the board previously. The infrastructure improvement fund, this fund accounts for the new non-home rule sales tax that the village will start receiving in fiscal year '16. It includes a, the budget includes a $200,000 property tax rebate, $430,000 for Mill Street Bridge rehabilitation, $48,000 for Briar Cliff Road engineering. We do have, in fiscal year '17, the potential for a LFO grant in fiscal year '17. And then $81,000 of design engineering for the first year of our, of our road program. The construction of that road program would take place in the summer of fiscal year '16, which would be fiscal year '17. And then we would continue to do that. We'd do the design engineering so that we could go to, go out to bid earlier in the year and hopefully get better pricing on our, our road programs. Tiff number one, we are looking at engineering for Pearl Store, Pearl Street Storm Sewer. Tiff number two, we are looking at only minor expenditures in fiscal year '16, and we would expect to start receiving the increment in fiscal year '17. Under water improvement, we just discussed the $983,000 Phase III or Contract C of the Boulder Hill Water Main Project. That is included in the water improvement and utilizes the remaining bond funds from the 2013 bonds. Other major items are chlorine system improvements of $350,000, beginning engineering on Jefferson Street and Route 25 lift stations, and then a waterworks system master plan. Lastly, the vehicle reserve fund. This is replacement of existing vehicles, and we look at the vehicles each year for wear and tear, mileage, and repair history, and then go through with Public Works what vehicles end up needing to be replaced. These were scheduled for replacement. There have been several that were delayed until the following year. If the board has any questions, I certainly will be able to answer those at this point.
I actually have, I'm sorry, I have a couple of questions for you. The, under infrastructure improvement, the Mill Street Bridge rehabilitation, that's scheduled to be done this fiscal year? Is that correct?
It would be fiscal year '16.
Okay, so this coming year?
This coming year.
So my question would be, this is supposed to be like a new funding source for us, and we're not getting our funds in until October 1st, and that's for our streets, our streets. Obviously, the bridge is part of our streets. My question would be, how can we schedule doing the bridge this fiscal year when we're not having the money come in until October? And also, we have residents who don't necessarily understand that it's going to take some time, that they're wanting their streets done right away. So my question would be, could you just explain a little bit about how we're funding the bridge project so that we can kind of talk to, talk to the residents when they have that concern about why is the bridge being done before my street?
And to tag on to trustee Spurling's question, what's wrong with the bridge?
I would ask Director Povens and Engineer Wallers, they could probably speak a little bit better than I could about it, but.
Sure.
It's your item, you tell them. I'll, I'll start on the, on the condition of the bridge and why we're proposing to do it. You may have noticed as you drive over the Mill Street Bridge, throughout the past few years, there've been more and more what look like potholes. That's really a sign of the deck basically wearing out, the concrete deck. We did a, a basic chain drag. It's like a sounding where you try to hear for hollow spots in that bridge, and we think there's a fairly significant portion of the top of the deck that needs to be replaced. I'll let Engineer Wallers add details if he wants, but I don't believe we're looking at a full deck replacement where we'd have to take the entire deck off. And when I say the deck, I mean the concrete driving surface. It's poured around a series of reinforcing bars, steel reinforcing bars. So generally, we'll remove the top several inches of the deck, expose those bars, clean them. Sometimes they have to be treated, whether in the epoxy coated or whatever, and then we'll pour a new top of the deck. Pete, anything to?
I think Mike's got the basic outline. There's also some work that'll be done on one of the bridge abutments. There's some erosion on it that needs to be repaired. We'll generally clean up the, the, the painting of the side parapets and things like that, which we've done in the past. Clean up the lighting along there. I think it just has to be reset. But it's primarily to get into that bridge deck and repair it before it gets any worse. And if it, you know, as we salt and, and water seeps into the bridge deck, it tends to get to that rebar and tend to expand, and it gets worse in a hurry. So I think the timing is right for us to do some maintenance work on there. Could it be delayed? You know, possibly, but you run the risk that you're just going to have a lot more patching when you do that, so.
If I may, just kind of try and answer the rest of your question. Couple of things I'd just point out, as I mean, Justin mentioned these, but, you know, we have set this up as a, as a separate fund. We're not required to do that. It could have, the money could have funneled into our capital improvement fund that we already had, but we felt it best to keep it in a separate fund, so it's very transparent. Here's where the money came from, here's what it's being used for. Since you will have to answer, we all will have to answer to the, to the public on that. As far as, you know, we discussed the timing, it goes into effect July 1st, so we'll start probably getting actual cash in around October. So we're not getting a full year of it this year. So the plan was to do the engineering for a full program for the following summer, so we're prepared for that. As far as why the bridge this year, we've substantially completed the engineering for that, you know, the study of that now, so it's a project that we have ready that we can, that we can go with to use up the, you know, at least some of the money that we will have coming in this year, even though it's a smaller amount. I guess that's kind of, that was our thinking behind it.
In other words, if, if you're getting the money in, in October of, of this year?
Right.
This rehab basically is like next April, May of '16?
I mean, it could still happen this, it could still happen this summer or fall, and we'll just.
Okay, depending on where the money comes in. All right.
And I guess, Jeff, what we were thinking is that we were going to try to target after Montgomery Fest as our start of construction, thinking that, that by the time you got into your first pay request, it's likely that the monies would be at the village, or there would have to be some bridge funding, but that's the intent. And there is some engineering that needs to be done in advance of the project, which would allow us time to do that as well.
I have an additional question for you. With Governor Rauner's budget proposal, there is an item where local funding can be cut dramatically. Have you made adjustments to the budget? I mean, do you have something in mind for us where if that passes, we're going to be able to adjust our budget then before we have to pass it?
At this time, we have not made adjustments to the budget that was presented to the board at the last meeting at the committee of the whole. Jeff and I have looked at the budget as it exists right now and have identified for fiscal year '16 the cuts that we would make if necessary.
Okay.
But we don't want to, we don't want to necessarily jump the gun and, and take things out of the budget yet if, if that doesn't end up happening. But we have identified items for fiscal year '16.
So we're essentially, we're ready, if that passes, to make adjustments?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Is it possible we would take the, the way he's talking, maybe $90,000 away from a village our size? Would that mean the $90,000 might come out of our reserves, so we wouldn't have $40,000? We'd have more like $35,000 or something?
Denny, I think the correct number is $900,000.
$900,000?
$900,000.
Oh, that makes a little difference. Okay.
Our, I mean, our hope is that, you know, his statement was 50%, that there'll be some give and take, and that number may come down, whatever the final number is. I mean, zero would be obviously our preference. Like Justin said, we did go through and look and earmark things that we would bring to you as proposed things to take out if that happens. We're hoping as we get closer to needing to, to approve the budget, we've got a better handle on where it's going to end up. We may not know exactly because they don't have to approve their budget until after. You know, ours will need to be approved, so.
Hmm. Well, it seems like our, our budget's pretty lean now, so I, I'm pretty concerned if that passes, we, we can have some, some big changes for the village in terms of the services that we provide and.
It's the full $900,000. That would be 10% of our general fund.
Right.
Which.
With the discussion regarding our budget currently, and we're going to have to pass and vote on our budget, at that point, when the changes do come down, would we then amend our budget?
I, I mean, we haven't fully decided this yet. I mean, I would almost think it'd be better that we, as we get close to approving the budget, figure out where we think it's going to go and put those in the original budget, rather, because if we adopt the full budget and we go through May and June and spend some of that and then need to cut, I think we're better off pulling out what we think we need to pull out before you adopt it.
Okay.
Just so we know where we stand and.
Understand to follow the process of how we're going to go about this.
Yeah, I'd rather do it that way, and then if it comes up, we can put stuff back in to, somewhat the last minute, something changes, then we do that, rather than leave it in and when we need to cut it, find out, maybe we've already spent some of it.
I have a question. Up on M F T, can you tell me the dollar amount that we spent of M F T on street maintenance last year and also the amount of M F T that we spent on road salt? Just ballpark?
I can. Just some more. Fiscal year '14, we spent approximately $540,000 on street maintenance and $131,000 on snow removal. That's for fiscal year '14.
Are we expecting that we will need $250,000 in salt, or is that kind of a placeholder?
Well, for this year, the contract wonder for FY '15, you'll remember, we were left out of the State of Illinois CMS Central Management Services bid, so we went out and got our own bids. That, our minimum cost this year will be $240,000.
Okay.
That's based on a minimum purchase of 2,400 tons of salt at $103 per ton, so a little bit more than $240,000. We have the option of buying up to 3,000 tons of salt. We haven't really gotten, and staff hasn't really got to that part of the discussion yet as to whether we think that would be an opportunity we should take advantage of or if we should just buy the minimum and then see how our bids come in next year for salt.
How are we doing on road salt so far this winter?
They'd be doing pretty good.
Generically, we're doing okay. I don't have the numbers. We haven't reached our minimum yet. I haven't talked with Gary as to exactly where we're at on ordering right now, but I've talked to him. I mean, obviously, expenditures is a, something we really need to watch closely this year, so you and I have talked several times about our strategy for not purchasing too soon and just so we can have it, so. But I, I mean, we have plenty of salt. I can get that information out to all of you, let you know where we stand.
Why are, oh, because I'm, if we go fiscal year '14, I've got $671,000 between maintenance and, and road salt, and here we've got $500,000. Why are we losing M F T?
We're not, we're not losing any M F T. What happens is, as you go through each year, you obligate funds, you bid the project, and there may be less expended, so periodically you have accumulation of monies that you then put into the fund to use on a, any given year. So it's kind of a, there's no loss in funding, and anything that you get goes in the M F T account.
So in fiscal year '14, we may have had a slightly higher reserve that we used for, for certain things? Okay. Thank you.
Hey, Mike, what kind of storage building you putting up there? Just a pole building, aren't you?
Without giving the, the trade name out, because I don't know if we'll go with that brand, you may have seen it. It's a, like an aluminum tube frame, an arch frame, and then it has a canvas stretched over it. You can either, they have ground anchors that basically screw into the ground. You can attach it on that, or you can build a block wall, like a concrete block wall, and elevate it, but it's sort of an arched cloth structure.
It's just going to be open, there's no, there's going to be no doors on there, correct?
Well, requested two of them. I think, I think they're both listed here. One of them is going to kind of be an outbuilding that we, if you're familiar with our, the property on, on Nell Road, we've got the salt storage building, and then we've got the ground storage tank. There's an open space in there. We're going to look to put it there. That'll be the larger building. That one, we think, would have some type of door on it. We'd have closed ends on it, and that would be for long-term equipment and vehicle storage. So right now, so much of our equipment sits out in the yard, all the plows and salt spreaders and a lot of that equipment during the, the summer months, so those we would kind of put out there. And then the second building is a smaller one. Again, if you remember from the, just right behind our Public Works garage, there used to be two old wooden garages. One of those we tore down, was in bad shape. The other one's in pretty bad shape, too, but it's still standing. This would basically replace both of those, that same footprint. That, we think, will just be open. Again, just so we can drive in and out, we can store some black dirt in there if we want. We'll use it for mower storage in the winter, you know, kind of things that are going to be used on a more frequent basis during whatever season we're in.
Sticking with about $160,000 for both of them?
Yeah, I got quotes from one vendor, you know, and, again, we haven't worked out all the details, but I tried to be somewhat specific on what we wanted as far as size
So the, the cost of the buildings is really going to add to the longevity of the investments we've made into the equipment that's sitting outside right now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, I had one question on that.
Yes.
The, is this a more cost-effective approach than, let's say, finding some vacant manufacturing storage location in town you could park at for the winter and move it out?
Yeah, I'd have a hard time answering whether it's more cost effective. I haven't really studied that. I mean, I've looked at the price of real estate in the area and, you know, the challenge is coming up with a long-term funding source to make a commitment to a mortgage or whatever other, you know, financing vehicle you'd use, so.
I was just thinking about leasing.
Yeah, we, we actually brought this up during our two, two budget that.
I didn't look at leasing in comparison to this. We have looked at leasing storage space in the past. It's been a couple of years.
Okay.
And I don't recall the exact square footage prices, but I do very distinctly remember that we felt that to lease buildings in town, they were being leased out at like manufacturing district rates, and we really just needed open, dry storage rates, and we had a hard time finding that. We actually worked with one of the local realtors.
Okay.
Who, who gave us some leads and.
And these two structures that we would purchase would be removable. We could use them in the future if we someday did a Public Works facility, we could take these down and reuse them.
Yes.
Okay.
There's a cost associated with that, and I think everybody's aware of that, you know, it's more than a few hundred bucks. I mean, you'd need cranes and special equipment to put them up and take them down.
Okay.
So, but yeah, they could be relocated.
So we can't use them for the Fest?
For the Fest?
Yeah.
Everything is open game for Fest.
Any other questions for staff on CIP?
Vehicle reserve, have we, fair game to discuss that now, or?
Sure, anything, Mike.
The, could we review the building maintenance van, its age and condition?
There is no building maintenance van right now. The, our building maintenance tech is currently using Chevy Trailblazer that I think is a 2007? Yeah, 2007. It has about 160,000 miles on it. It's in reasonably good shape for a car with that many miles, but it's our recommendation to replace it, and it's, initially, that was purchased. That was a vehicle that I was driving for some time, and then we, you know, turned it over into the building maintenance vehicle. It's not really set up for that type of use, so we didn't, we didn't feel we wanted to buy one when we created the building maintenance tech position. It wasn't that urgent, but now that it's reached its, you know, targeted lifespan and its higher mileage, and we would look to replace it with some sort of van. Ford Connect is one that we've talked about, if you're familiar with those, but there's several models out there, different manufacturers, that are really geared towards hauling equipment and tools, and you can set them up with different shelving in the back. It's just a much more efficient use of space. Right now, he pretty much has everything in the, the back hatch and on the back seat, you know, the floor in the back, so.
And I think this vehicle, replacing this vehicle was talked about last year during the budget process?
Yes.
I think we pulled it, it was right at the end, but.
I think Mike Murphy used it for Julie for a while, too.
Well, we actually purchased two of them back in 2006 or '07.
He used one?
And one's been the Julie vehicle for many years. It doesn't have nearly the miles on it, but when we were asked to replace that, we'll probably look at a different type of vehicle. Again, it's just.
Not used.
Mike, and then, you remember Joe Schatz was our Julie locator when we first started, built some different racks and things out of plywood, so they've kind of, have made it work, but, so eventually, when we replace that, we'll look at a different type of vehicle as well, some sort of van. Do they answer your questions?
Yes, yes, thank you.
All right, if you guys have any more questions, we can entertain those now or pass those along to staff. We'll talk about this many more times before we formally adopt it in April. Move on, is there any new or unfinished business to come before the board this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Future meetings, I think all the board is aware, tomorrow morning, there's a legislative breakfast for Metro West that all of you are invited to. Press conference, we'll follow that at 9:30 regarding Governor Rauner's budget proposal. The municipalities have been watching that. I know Jeff and I were both watching that on Wednesday of last week, but the Metro West has been following this very closely, and will continue to do so with the IML and Page Mayor Managers, that kind of thing, so if you're free and want to come to that tomorrow. And then you can see our next Village Board meeting is March 9th. With that, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment of an employee pursuant to five ILCS 120 over 2C1.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
Trustee Heinz?
Yea.
Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, I'll call the meeting back to order and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second by Trustee Heinz, second by Trustee Youngerman. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Heinz? Trustee Youngerman?
Yea.
Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
Trustee Bond?
Yes.
Trustee Spurling?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yes.
And we're adjourned, thank you.